Good afternoon and thank you for joining us for our second Zoom Town Hall meeting. I'm Provost Tom DiLorenzo and UND's COVID-19 point person. This open forum is to help answer questions you may have regarding decisions and actions being taken by the university leadership to help UND weather the financial implications of COVID-19. This forum is being recorded and will be posted to our blog following today's session for those who are not able to join us live. I am joined today by interim President Joshua Nguyen and incoming President Andy Armocost, incoming interim Provost Debbie Storrs, Vice President for Finance and Operations Jed Shivers, Vice President for Student Affairs Diversity and Inclusion Kara Hallgren, interim Vice President for Research and Economic Development John Mahalich, Vice President for Marketing and Communications Melanie Linder, Athletic Director Bill Chaves, Associate Vice President of Human Resources Peggy Barber, UND Police Chief Eric Plummer, and UND Alumni Association and Foundation CEO Deanna Carlson-Zink. I will serve as the moderator for our discussion, but before we get started, President Nguyen and incoming President Armocost would like to say a few words. Josh?
Thanks very much, Tom. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you again for all that you are doing for UND, the community in North Dakota. We know that these are trying times and we will get through this, but we will only get through it together. So, thank you for all that you do. Having said that, it is clear from some of the messaging that went out this week and what you've read in the newspaper that universities such as UND are in a somewhat more precarious position than they have been before, probably because of the COVID-19 pandemic. The impact on UND is actually occurring now, and from a financial standpoint, we're predicting that by the end of this academic year, UND will lose something like $11 million in revenue. So, we need to be proactive rather than reactive about that so that we continue to position UND not only now, but also in the future. But to meet this challenge, we need to do a number of things in the short term, and then incoming President Armocost will address some of the things that we need to think about in the intermediate term. As you know, in the short term, there are a number of things that we're doing. First of all, we have put a hiring pause or hiring chill in effect. What this means is that while we're not freezing quote-unquote "all new employees," we are doing a pause, which means we will really look very carefully at any new employees to make sure they really are mission critical with our ability to go forward. Secondly, we are also reexamining projects and expenditures such as through the request for a postal process to make sure we really need to do them now. Thirdly, we are asking all units to look at what they can do to limit expenses and preserve cash. And then finally, you know about the announcement about the reduction in effort or hours program that we will be instituting. This is intended to do two things, as you know. Number one, to preserve cash for the university so that we can anticipate problems in the future and be able to address them, while, number two, trying to be as proactive and supportive of our employees as possible. This is made possible when we reduce someone's hours because the work is, at least temporarily, no longer there. It is made possible through the use of North Dakota Unemployment Insurance and the CARES Act. And because of this, the great majority of employees who may be affected by this will not see a material reduction in their reimbursement, in their compensation, and their health insurance premium will continue to be supported by UND. So, by doing these four things and others, we will go a long way in addressing our short-term issues for this academic year as we prepare for the still uncertain future that will start for the next academic year. And to mark this transition from the present future, it's now my pleasure to reintroduce incoming President Dr. Andy Armocost. Andy?
Thanks, Josh, and let me reiterate what President Nguyen just focused on, and that's the challenging times that we're in, both health-wise and also with respect to the near-term and long-term budgets. But I have been thoroughly impressed with all of the campus efforts to make sure that we don't miss a beat with respect to delivering a high-quality education to our students and to make sure that we're taking care of each other, the members of our community. So, today, my hope is that we can share good information with you, that we can answer the questions that you've submitted, and then my pledge to you is that we continue to keep the lines of communication open and that we deal with these issues with great transparency and openness. And so, I just want to reinforce the fact that we, as a campus, are in this together. We are one UND. Thanks. Over to you, Tom.
Thank you, Andy. I'm going to go ahead and start some of the questions we've already received. I'll spend about half of our time doing that, and you can take in the questions and answers, and then I'll let you know about the time we're going to make sure we hear from you as well. And at that time, we'll be using the Q&amp;A feature at the bottom of your screen. So, the first question I'm going to give to Vice President Jed Shivers. How will service areas on campus be impacted? Jed?
Thanks, Tom. So, you know, I think one of the things that we've really tried to keep as a constant is maximizing the safety of our students, faculty, and staff during the pandemic. That's really number one. And so, since students aren't going to be on campus, I think, at least until the fall at the earliest, any function that depends upon a physical interaction with students will continue to be reduced. During the move to unemployment benefits, we'll also examine, and we want, you know, all managers to examine what work might not occur during the May 15th to July 31st period. It's a very explicit, discrete period of time. And, you know, we really are, I think, what we'll see is really a differential effect across the campus. Hard for me to imagine, for example, that we're going to reduce public safety. I don't think that would be a wise move during a pandemic kind of an era. But we are going to be looking and ask our managers, which they're doing, really looking closely at what makes sense, and it's really about this discrete time period. That's really what we're asking people to focus on, and that's the May 15th to July 31st period.
Thank you, Jed. The next question will go to Bill Chaves. Will athletics be affected by these decisions?
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it, for sure. You know, we are monitoring what the NCAA landscape is, what folks are doing right now from a legislative standpoint. There's been some relief already given in some way, shape, or form, but our student-athletes are continuing on, obviously remotely, and we're monitoring the landscape. We're part of three conferences, and those conferences, we are speaking with them on a weekly basis, and so more to come with that, but certainly we will be affected in one way, shape, or form.
Thank you, Bill. Next question to Debbie Storrs. Will there be potential cuts to existing programs?
Well, you know, pre-COVID, we had some real demographic changes that we were grappling with that led to enrollment reductions across the nation. I think most of us have seen the newspaper article about MSMU, who's proposed to discontinue 10 majors because of their budget gap. So, right now, what our academic deans are doing is they're looking at enrollments and they're considering how best to manage that anticipated reduction in enrollments and in revenue, and so this includes a range of different options, increasing teaching loads, as well as looking at which programs we might not want to accept students in because of enrollment issues and a reduction in revenue. So, I think it's the broad spectrum that the deans are looking at.
Thank you, Debbie. The next question will be for Josh Nguyen. Will merit pay be affected by these decisions?
So, merit pay is legislatively mandated. The 2.5% increase that the legislature deemed appropriate during the last legislative session applies to appropriated salaries and is actually part of state law. So, at this point, barring some change to the law, UND and the other institutions in the NDUS system will be giving merit increases. Let me emphasize the word merit. It is based on annual evaluations, and at this point, we are wanting to proceed with this. Now, it is possible that the state law could be changed, but the way it stands now is that it is part of state law. We will obviously follow state law. So, at this point, the 2.5% merit increase pool on appropriated salaries will be moving forward for this coming academic year.
Thank you, Josh. The next question will be for Peggy Barber. You see and hear of difficulties of people applying for unemployment. How has the process been going in Grand Forks?
It's our understanding that it's been going fairly well. We have been made known that they've hired additional folks locally and at the state level to process these. And so, with my conversation yesterday with a member of that group in this region, they've gone well. They're not, you know, bound up significantly in any places, so we're hopeful that that will continue.
Thank you, Peggy. The next question is for Andy. With the last round of budget cuts, it appeared there wasn't much of an attempt to discuss what was being considered with those being affected, which greatly affected employee morale campus-wide. What is the plan to change the process so employees feel heard and shown some empathy?
Well, I wasn't here for the last round, but I can really just state my commitment to making sure that we take care of our employees by providing open and frequent communications so that as they make life plans and continue the great work at UND, that we can continue that as effectively as we can. So, all I can do is make sure that myself and the rest of the vice presidents and the deans and all AVPs and supervisors keep the lines of communication open and commit to the well-being of the faculty, staff, and students at UND.
Thank you, Andy. The next question is for Melanie Linder. What can we do to help enrollment even through our own social media accounts?
But first, I just want to say thank you for that question. I really appreciate it. We are all influencers with our families, our friends, our neighbors, those we have contact with in the community. I think one of the most impactful things we can do is reassure people that UND is strong, and we're working hard to make sure that we emerge even stronger as we get through this. One of the first things that we can do is if you have contact with students, whether they're in your class, whether it's a student worker, whether it's a friend or family, you know, someone who's a student at UND, make contact with them. Make sure that they've registered for their fall classes. Retention is really important to us right now, and if they have questions or concerns, help direct them to the right place within UND that they can get support. One Stop is a great place to start. For new students, I think it's great if we're able to share the points of pride of UND. UND is a regional leader on campus as well as online. We've managed this transition well, and we will continue to do so as we go forward. The question about social media is a great one. It's really easy to repost UND's social media. We have Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, LinkedIn. Share the great stories. We're doing a lot of information about resources for students, and my team is putting together a social media training that we can do via Zoom where we'll be able to provide you with assets and proof points of your own that you can share on your own social media accounts. So, more to come.
Thank you, Melanie. Next question is for Jed Shivers. How will the federal CARES Act support be dispensed on campus?
Sorry about the mute. So, the CARES Act, you know, we really have to give a shout-out to our congressional delegation for supporting this. Really provides us with support in a couple of ways. So, the first way is each entity, each institution of higher education receives a formulaically-derived award based primarily on the number of students and their eligibility for certain financial aid programs, like the more Pell-eligible students you have, the more money that you tend to get. So, of the 5.4 million projected for UND, 50% must be distributed to eligible students to help them attend UND, and we think that's terrific. I mean, you know, where people are facing such a difficult financial period, you know, those dollars, we think, are really key, and we really greatly appreciate them. The other 50% is for institutional expenses, and as of a call that I was just on minutes ago with the system, we really haven't gotten any guidance on how to use those yet, and so we're hoping that the use of those funds will be clarified as both we and our representatives in the system work with the Federal Department of Higher Education. But I just, it's probably just worth noting that while this money is wonderful and we greatly appreciate it, as you heard from President Nguyen, you know, we are probably, we project we'll probably lose about $10 to $11 million of revenue just in the FY '20, and so the real question's going to be, you know, what are we going to do about that? And one of the responses is to really think through with managers, and as I talked about earlier, the kinds of work that can be postponed, you know, during this May 15th-July 31st period. Why is that important? Because that's when the federal money and the federal program is in full swing. And to give you a sense of how we're trying to time this, and Peggy can comment on this, the money is really just arriving now from the federal government. So, we really wanted to create an environment where, as, you know, we're an employer, we're not, you know, unemployment, but we really want to create an environment where the transition into these benefits are as seamless as possible for all of our employees. So, that's another part of the CARES Act. It really provides a mechanism to profoundly augment whatever state unemployment is available and to help people be as harmed as little as possible as they move into these benefits. I think from our perspective, you know, we can't guarantee zero harm, but I think it's a much better place for us to be in with the availability of these benefits than otherwise. And so, that's pretty much where we are at this time. So, those are the two primary benefits of the CARES Act.
Thanks, Jed. I'm going to tee up a question for Debbie and then a follow-up for either Josh or Andy. First question for Debbie is, I heard UND is considering going online through the fall semester. Is there any truth to that?
Thanks, Tom. You know, we don't really know how COVID's going to play out in North Dakota, and so what we're trying to do is be prepared to be as flexible as possible to adapt to whatever conditions we're faced with. And towards that end, our Vice Provost Jeff Holm has been working with each academic dean to look at which courses in the fall should be prepared to be taught online, including a smaller set of ES courses. And then beyond that, we've asked deans to work with faculty to think about how they can be flexible in their courses. It's potential we may have to move in and out of the online and on-campus environment. We simply don't know. And towards that end, we want to help provide some resources for faculty to develop some of those online courses this summer. Many of the faculty already update their courses regularly, and so the focus is really going to be on flexibility to accommodate whatever we're faced with so that we can serve our students in the best quality way possible.
Thanks, Debbie. Here's a two-part question for either Josh and/or Andy. The first one is, can you provide any update to the timeframe in which remote work will continue? Does it still remain through May 15th, or is it also extended through July 31st? The other question is, how likely will it be that we are on campus in the fall? If we were to go online, how soon would a decision be made?
So, I'll chime in first, and I know that Josh will certainly add his perspective as a physician, but the timeline for ceasing remote work and returning to campus is frankly unknown. We talked about the fluidity of the virus, but we will await guidance from the CDC, from the governor, and from the State Department of Health before assessing when we will start transitioning employees back to work on campus. So, the date that's been published in May is likely going to be extended and will be open to when the return actually happens because it will depend on this very fluid situation. I also wanted to highlight the fact that the campus is developing a plan that mirrors the three-phased approach that President Trump had laid out, and that three-phase plan has triggers that will indicate when we can move to a more open campus, and we just have to be cautious and see what direction both the virus and the state response follows over the course of the summer. And as far as courses in the fall, Debbie talked about our preparation to have a limited, some limit on the offerings, some blend of on-campus and online. The degree to which we're on campus will again depend upon what we see in the next couple of months. So, we just ask people to be patient and to listen very carefully to the communications that we offer to the community. Josh?
Sorry, trouble with the mute button or unmute button. So, I would emphasize the thread between what Debbie and Andy said, which is, and I'm putting on my public health and physician hat now, that I think the most likely scenario looking forward is that the new normal will be periods of on-campus followed by periods where there is less on-campus experience. I don't think it's going to be all or none, so I don't think it's going to be business as usual for the fall semester, but I also don't expect it to be entirely online. I think the most reasonable expectation is going to be a blend of both, but as incoming President Armocost just emphasized, it's still early to be able to make firm determinations about that. That's why maintaining flexibility, both financially as well as educationally, is so important so that we can be more proactive rather than completely reactive. But I think the theme of variability is going to be what the future holds, at least the foreseeable future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Here's a two-part question for Peggy. What happens to a staff member's salary if they go to one-half or less of their hours as of May 16?
So, the reduction in hours would happen on the UND side, and then they're eligible to apply for unemployment for that loss. And unemployment will review the last four quarters of wages, and they make a decision on what that looks like in terms of a weekly benefit they're eligible for, and then they get a percentage of that benefit. Once they're eligible for a percentage of that benefit, they're still also eligible for the $600 per week from the CARES Act, and that's available to them regardless of whether they make $1, $300. They're still get the same $600 benefit from the CARES Act each week.
Thank you. Here's the second part, Peggy. What if the unemployment benefits from the CARES Act run out?
We don't expect that to happen. It's set to sunset July 31st, and at that point, we'll see if the government comes up with something additional, but during the timeframe that we're initially discussing, that should be available throughout that period of time.
Thank you. Here's a question for Eric. In response to the return-to-campus roadmap, are we going to be required to be vaccinated in order to return working on campus?
So, the short answer is no. So, vaccines and other therapeutics are still in the testing and trial phases. However, physical distancing and other requirements recommended by the CDC as well as the state's Department of Health will be put in place and communicated prior to returning to work on campus.
Thank you. Here's a question for Josh. If a person is part of a temporary reduction, what impressions does that leave if decisions have to be made about permanent reductions? Wouldn't that be seen as a strike against those employees if permanent reduction decisions have to be made?
Thank you, Tom, and a logical question, but let me just try to point out that we're talking about two different time periods. One is the short-term period, especially when the CARES Act is in effect, and then there is the longer-term issue. And the key determinant of what happens is going to be the work requirement that will be there. So, we are trying to position ourselves during the remainder of this year and into July such that work that could be deferred or work that is obviated because there are not students on campus might lead to a reduction in hours, pardon me, a reduction in effort. What happens in the fall is a different question and is not necessarily directly related to what happens now, because, for instance, if we are largely back on campus in the fall, then the workload is going to be significantly different than what it is when we're working from home and students are learning online. So, it will depend on the circumstances, and the first part does not necessarily predetermine what will happen or what might happen in the second phase.
Thank you, Josh. Here's a question for Bill Chaves. Pickleball is going to restart at UND. Even though campuses closed, athletic activities for fewer than 100 people have been given the green light. Can this be correct information?
Thanks, Tom. Not in our facilities. So, our facilities are closed to the public, so I can't speak for what's happening in the city in general, but certainly not in our facilities, Tom.
Thanks, Bill. Here's a question for either John Mahalich or Jed. UND is a larger institution, I think they mean, than NDSU, and holds the medical school, law school, and the aerospace school. Why is NDSU receiving $1.1 million more from the CARES Act than UND?
I'll take a stab, Jed, and then you can chime in if you'd like. So, good question, but basically, the funds for the institutes of higher education in the CARES Act were applied formulaically, as Jed alluded to earlier, and two of the big variables were how many online, on-campus students we had and how many students were Pell-eligible. So, those were two of the biggest factors. It wasn't something we negotiated. It wasn't something we had any control over, and it was based on, largely from what I can tell, based on 2017 and '18 iPads data that we submitted previously. So, that's why other institutions might have gotten more than us and others might have gotten less.
Yeah, John has that just exactly right. It is based upon primarily those factors, and it's based upon the 2018 year, and you can imagine that some, say, big urban public universities are probably seeing a higher payout per capita than anybody in North Dakota just because of the nature of the population of students. So, that's the way it's going. It's really formulaic.
So, here's a question also for Jed and John. Maybe we'll start with Jed this time. How will reductions in force or time impact our grant-funded programs?
Yeah, so, that's a good question, and I would say, I'll give you my perspective on that. I would hope that they wouldn't affect them at all. You know, the great thing about grant funding, at least at this moment, is that even though the United States is going through a very difficult economic time, I at least am not aware of decrements in funding from either the NIH, the DoD, the DOE, or any other significant funders. In fact, I think the ERC has been cranking along quite well in terms of generating new awards. So, this may, you know, paradoxically be a good time for doing research, particularly that's federally funded, because there's so much demand, not just in the biomedical area, but in other areas, and I think, I would hope that, I think, people And I think, I would hope that, I think people are really understanding the real value that research brings in unfortunately, a more personal way. So, you know, I think from my perspective, I would not want to see, you know, people who are 100% funded on research or substantially funded on research really being affected. I just don't know that it would make sense. You know, those people are employed, they've got work to do, and their funding sources coming from outside the appropriated dollars, which are tuition and, and operating budget from the state.
Tom, if I might just add on to what Jed said, putting on my dean's hat, it looks like the School of Medicine and Health Sciences may have its second highest annual amount of research funding in the history of the school this year. And one of the groups is our group that's looking at what's called host pathogen interactions, as is, as in a human being being attacked by a virus. That would be an area, don't you think, that we would want to expand? And there almost certainly will be additional federal resources available to do that, to do, to help deal with this pandemic problem. So I agree with you completely that there are real opportunities there and U N D, per usual, can be a leader in these areas.
Great. Thanks. Any follow-up, John?
I know, just to reiterate what President Wen and Jed said, this is a, this is a time when our researchers are working, working forward. We've made adjustments where, where needed in, in terms of lab work, but people are moving forward. I think it's a time of great opportunity and I think we should be focusing more effort at this time, given the circumstance and some of the additional federal dollars that are available.
Thank you. This one's for Peggy. When will the employees be notified of the reduction of hours and what date will this reduction take effect?
The reduction takes an effect essentially May 16th for most. And then additionally, we will, supervisors will notify employees directly up to or prior to May 1st. We are required to give a two weeks' notice and that would be the May 1st date. So we will be doing that by that date at the latest.
Here's a two-part question for Debbie. Are further reductions in graduate offerings anticipated?
Well, you know, our graduate admissions are still very, very strong. In fact, that's the hope really, because we have a lot more people interested in graduate education and it could help offset some of the lowered undergraduate admission trend. But it will be up to the deans to make those decisions about what graduate courses and offerings they can provide, based on a number of considerations, including how many GTA's and GRAs they'll be able to provide and, and what the faculty can handle. So I know the deans are, are working with their chairs and their faculty to consider all of those things. But we are hoping that graduate education and enrollment continues to grow.
Here's a little bit of a twist on that one, Debbie. Admitting graduate students in the fall at least is very unlikely considering most of the applicants are international. Any plans to admit them online and what would happen to their possible assistance?
Well, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about the challenges that our international students might face in terms of getting visas. And so the online opportunities are, I think, where potentials lay. And so we absolutely want to accept students when possible, if they can access their courses in an online environment. Those are some of the discussions that Vice Provost Jeff Holm is having with the deans and the chairs. But how can we prep for the graduate students that are international in an online environment, given that we anticipate they're going to be faced with some visa and travel restrictions?
Thank you. Here's a three-part question for Peggy. Do you anticipate people asking or requesting to go the unemployment route in light of the salary and benefits?
If we mean volunteering to do that, that's a possibility. However, we have a process according to our policy and N D S H R policy 24 that requires us to go through a specific steps, through specific steps in reviewing the workforce in every group.
Here's the second part. If staff members have their hours reduced, are they at higher risk of experiencing a reduction in hours as things go forward?
Not necessarily, no.
And part C, if we reduce hours to zero to 20 hours a week, how will this affect an employee's eligibility to their U N D health insurance coverage?
So all employees who are reduced, whether they're brought down to zero or have a partial work schedule for the week, will see no difference in most of their unemployment. So the health and life insurance that U N D covers will still continue. If they're reduced to zero, U N D will cover the cost of their voluntary benefits, which are things like dental and vision and so forth, will carry those. There are other options that we're looking at on, on that side. We are able to allow an employee to pay as they go. Otherwise, it, it will, it will collect in arrears. And so when the employee comes back, they will be, if they're down to zero, they will be required to pay back those, their share of the premiums that we've paid on the voluntary benefits. Additionally, leave accruals will just be held if they're down to zero. The, the seniority of a person and what those accrual levels are will not change. That will hold true. And for those that are working a partial schedule, they'll get those benefits at a prorated base in terms of, of leave and holiday at a prorated basis.
Thank you, Peggy. Here's a question for Bill Chaves. With athletic events on hold, will there be restructuring of funding to divert money from athletics to support academic activity?
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it. So today, we are still planning to play in the fall. You know, we've heard nothing differently at this point in time, but we are modeling several different budgets as we move forward and working with Jed and, and Carlos Stewart in that regard. So at this point, Tom, we still plan to play until we hear otherwise.
Thank you, Bill. Here's a question for Jed. Are there options for voluntary pay cuts and/or opt-out of fiscal year 21 merit raises to help U N D's overall bottom line?
Yeah, so, you know, one of the great things about the University of North Dakota is that people ask that question honestly, because, you know, that's altruism at its finest. And I really appreciate that question. So just to give you an idea of how I think this is going to work, and Peggy can also respond, you know, in order to get unemployment, you really have, management has to do the action. It's not something that you can volunteer for. If a person were to, for example, say, I'm going on leave between May 15th or May 16th and July 31st, they would not be eligible for the unemployment benefits. So this has to be as a result of a management action. I think that's the most important thing. So some sort of volunteer program or formal volunteer program, that's, that will not help the individual employee, which we really want to have happen here. So I think actually the way this will work is probably the way it ought to work, which is that managers will talk with employees and review the schedule during this discrete time period and figure out, you know, what are they going to do? Do they, you know, is, based upon the work, is there an opportunity to drop to 50%? Is there an opportunity to drop to zero? We provided managers with a calculator, which literally calculates for each person how this will work, but it's a guide, it's not a guarantee. So, you know, that's available to managers and they can have those conversations with their employees. So, you know, that's what, that's what really needs to happen. At the end of those conversations, which are going to happen quite rapidly, because as we know, you know, the end of the month is approaching with, with speed, then we'll be able to generate the requests. They'll all be reviewed by Human Resources to make sure that they're consistent with the rules and regulations, both federal and local. And then we will assist, you know, people will, the other key thing is people must apply for these benefits. This is not something that the university can kind of automatically do for you. So you must reply for the benefits if in fact you're, you know, one of those folks. And, but we will help people apply for those benefits, particularly people, and Peggy can talk more about this, who may have trouble connecting, you know, via the internet or whatever vehicle that they need to do to access the benefits.
Yeah, we are working with groups who may not have the technology either on campus or personally to move through this process in unemployment. It can be done via portal. It's quite easy to use. We've watched a couple happen recently from people who do not work at U N D and are already impacted by the law. And it has worked very well. The advice is to make sure that you read through the directions first before you start the process and have all the documents that you need to present. Like, one of those will be the letter that's provided to employees who are seeing reduction in hours, whether it's zero or a partial. But that letter is necessary to be provided so that the unemployment folks will know that you are still employed by U N D. It's an impact because of, of our current environment, including COVID, being COVID, and that, that we expect to bring you back. And those things are the reasons why you, you won't have to actually look for work during this time as well. It, our expectation, expectation is to bring you back. And so the governor waived, in his executive order on March 20th, he waived temporarily the requirement that you actively look for work on each week. So we are working with some of those groups now. You may also do this over the phone as well, but we are, we are working to help those who really don't have some of the technologies to, to, to do this and, and apply for those, those benefits.
Josh, a follow-up?
Yeah, so I just wanted to follow up on that very kind offer from the questioner and just point out that one of the ways to help, although it doesn't help the U N D budget per se, but one of the ways to help is to donate to help our students. So maybe if I might, Tom, just call on Deanna Carlson-Zink, the CEO of the U N D Alumni Foundation, to indicate how faculty and staff and friends of the university might be able to pitch in to help students. Deanna?
Absolutely. Thank you, President Wen. So we are pleased to be working with Student Affairs and Office of Student Affairs and Diversity to develop funds that are like an emergency fund situation. It's called our U N D Angel Fund. And this, these are donated dollars that can be put to work immediately. Students fill out an application form online that goes to Office of Student Affairs and then those gifts are given out. And so we've had a tremendous response from faculty, staff, our coaches, all across the board. We've had young alumni that are reaching back to those they went to school with and wanting to help out immediately. So we continue to promote this. You can go online to undalumni.org and it's right on our main page. You click a link and make whatever gift you would like to. Every gift is greatly appreciated by our students.
Thank you. Excellent. Thanks, Josh, for reminding us to go in that direction. I think this is a quick one, Peggy. Can staff take the reduction in hours earlier than May 15?
No.
I thought it was quick.
Yeah, the policy requires we give a two-week notice to folks. And so they, the expectation is they will work up until May 15th, their normal schedule, and then beyond that, whatever the agreement is.
Okay. Here's a two-part question for Josh and/or Jed. I'm going to say both parts because they're linked. Why are staff the only ones facing hours reductions? And what's the definition of mission critical?
So I think, on the theme of we're all in this together, I think everyone is, is going to be contributing in one way or another. For faculty, what this will mean at a minimum is a likely increase in amount of courses and workload. I mean, I think one of the things that we've experienced already is that the shift to online, at least from a faculty standpoint, actually may entail more effort and more work than standing in a classroom and giving a lecture. So there, I think people will be, there will be different expectations and different requirements for faculty as well as staff. The, the question was what, Tom?
The mission critical and staff only facing the reduction.
Right. Well, I tried to address the first one. As far as what we need to do going forward, we need to carry out those functions that are essential to the university now and in the future. So in carrying out our mission of education, discovery, and service, we have a lot of goals that are outlined in our strategic plan. Those are the things we really need to focus on. From the standpoint of staff with this reduction in hours that's going on now or will be going on, part of that has been occasioned by just a reduction in work because there aren't students on campus. And part of it is because of things that we can safely and appropriately defer to the future. But things that don't fall into those categories are part of what our mission is all about and we need to do everything possible to carry out those elements.
Thank you. Here's a question for Kara Holgren. What is the timeframe for the students to be moved out of residence hall completely?
Thanks, Tom. I'm going to answer it in two parts. First of all, we still have students living on campus with us. And so those students will continue to stay in the residence halls through the normal spring semester and will move out around the time of commencement. For those students who still have items in the residence halls and you haven't been able to pick them up, we certainly know that different students have different needs. And so we want to work with people individually to find a time for them to remove their belongings that works for them and they can do so safely. All we ask is that people coordinate with the U N D Housing Office to do that.
Thank you, Kara. Here's one for Debbie. The reductions in force have impacted faculty in a variety of ways. Departmental tenure and promotion guidelines and expectations were created under this older department arrangement. Will the university and its colleges be revising TRP expectations in light of these downward pressure on research and creative activity? If so, within what timeframe?
Yeah. Well, you know, the deans have been fantastic. We've been meeting with the deans at least twice a week. Tom and I have been on a range of conversations and issues, and this has come up. And your deans have been real advocates who want to make sure that faculty are successful. So they've been sharing ideas about how to ensure that even in the annual evaluations, that the COVID-related outcomes that may have an impact on your research or creative activity productivity is acknowledged so that you're not harmed by that. So the deans are having those conversations and coming up with ideas about how to make sure that you're protected in the annual evaluation. There has also been discussions about promotion and tenure guidelines. Those are things that I think absolutely should be reviewed at the department, college, and then at the provost level, because I don't think this is just this semester. This is going to be an ongoing issue that will impact your workload and your outcomes. And then the last thing I'll say is that with the deans and recognition that faculty's outcomes will be impacted, we have on the provost website an extension request if you want to extend the date by which you come up for promotion and tenure. We already had an existing policy that allowed for unusual circumstances that would allow for an extension and we're evoking that and we've created a clear process. The deans have been very engaged and supportive in that. If you have any questions, please ask your dean or contact me. We're happy to help, help you navigate the, the process.
Thank you, Debbie. Here's one that we can start with Jed. How are the enrollment projections calculated?
Sorry about that. Took a minute. So, well, it's a pretty complex process and I don't, so I'll try and summarize it as succinctly as I can. Basically, we look at the, you know, we have, we keep track of a multi-year history by college, by degree type, by locale, because college, by degree type, by locale, because revenue is actually tied to where people live. There's a very complex process, which is run by Carla Mojon Stewart, who may also want to speak to this in a minute. She's sitting far away from me, but behind me. And so we basically utilize those historical data, and that provides us with a baseline and we can see what the trends have been. Take that information and in an iterative process, which each of the deans of the colleges work our way through the programs in an extremely granular fashion and arrive at not just really enrollment, the real key driver here are student credit hours, which in turn results in revenue. So that's that's in a nutshell how we do it. Carla, you want to expand on that at all? Carla is is good with my explanation.
Okay, thank you. Here's a three part question for Peggy. Can staff members still utilize a tuition waiver for summer if their hours are reduced?
Yes, because there's still, if they're a benefited employee who sees a reduction, they're still a benefited employee, and therefore that does hold true. They just need to make sure that they file the proper paperwork in time, as usual.
Thanks, Peggy. Here's the second part. Is the stimulus portion of the unemployment package taxed?
In the unemployment monies that they will get from the state vis a vis that $600, there's no income tax that's taken out, but it will become part of your taxable income at the end of the year. So it will be reported in the W whatever from the state, what that's called, from the state. I'm sorry, I don't know what that's called.
No problem. The third part, what is the impact on your flex benefits, specifically daycare contributions, if your employment is reduced?
Right, so we're still looking into that right now. There are, there may be two options. One of the options would be if they don't want to to pick up those benefits and continue to pay those voluntary benefits that we talked about earlier on an ongoing basis, which will let everyone know who's affected, who has those those types of premiums, will let you know what those look like before May 15th. So you can make that decision. If they don't, then they go in arrears with everything else. But in the in the case of our flex benefits, we are allowed to spread those out over time to be paid out. It's my understanding with the dental and the health, we may not be able to do the same thing. However, with the with the flex, ASI flex, we can do that. So rather than having to pay that whole portion back at once in August when a person comes back, we can make arrangements and and make that smaller deductions throughout the rest of the year through December 31st.
Actually, let me add a fourth one, Peggy, because it's sort of related. Will the balance on the benefits that the university is paying for furloughed employees be due from the employee all at once when they resume employment?
Yep, so two part answer there with the flex, probably not. But with the with the the premiums on the the vision or the dental, probably so. But as I mentioned, an employee will have the option to pay as they go throughout the summer or throughout the time that they're reduced. If you are not reduced fully, then that will be deducted from your check regardless. But if you're reduced to zero, then you will have an option to pay that as you go, which which may be a better better financial arrangement than having it all taken out of that first check when you come back in August. Either way, there needs to be some planning and some consideration on impact on your financials individually.
Thank you, Peggy.
Sure.
Here's a question for Debbie. Are faculty teaching contracts looking at not being renewed for summer semester as part of these cuts?
So the deans have been asked to look at the summer offerings and make sure that those are courses that are fully enrolled and to identify courses that they don't have to offer again as an attempt to reserve some funding. So in general, you know, faculty are in general on a nine month contract. So faculty who teach in the summer anticipate teaching. That would vary depending on the college demand and need.
Thank you, Eric. Here's a question for you. Will small groups be allowed on campus this summer?
So right now, the university is closed to all events, camps and groups on campus, and that's through August 7th. And the reason we're doing that is as we move further into phase one, the guidance that's out there is not is to only limit groups or gathering to no more than 10 people. As we progress into the next phase or phase two, we will be limited to groups less than 50. So however, in all phases, physical distancing and other measures are going to be required. Now, these provide some unique challenges for the university community, and we will continue to vet all of groups or events that people hope to have on campus in the upcoming months through the events process as we move forward.
Thank you. This is sort of tied together there, Eric. Let me add this. Are there are there plans to cancel some regular summer conferences?
So again, right now, anything on campus is going to be canceled through August 7th based on the guidance and the directors put out by President Nguyen earlier. As we move forward and as things start to improve within the state and within the region, we may be able to revisit those items.
Thank you. Here's a question for Jed. Will there be a new round of BSEPs, voluntary separations, due to the current budget realities?
It's a great question, and I guess it's, you know, we would, we're probably going to consider it, but at this point, we don't have any plans specifically to embark upon that.
There's so many questions. I may have asked this before, it may have been answered. For Peggy, is there an option for the employee to drop benefits so that they don't have to repay the premiums?
I was just answering that one on the chat or in the Q and A. We don't think so. Again, with flex, that may be the one where that can be done. It's it's quite a bit more loose on some of the parameters, but with the dental and vision, it's likely that this is not enough of a qualifying event. However, we are looking at that through Andy Pers.
Thank you. A question for Josh and or Andy. Other institutions and organizations outside of higher ed are having their top tier salary individuals take pay cuts. Would that be a strategy UND uses?
Thanks, Tom. Well, this is something that the Executive Council, incoming President Armakost and I have been discussing, and I can assure you that it's under careful and active discussion this time.
Thank you. Here's a two part question for Peggy, and we're we're getting close to our time here. So I'll give you some information about how to get your questions answered if we haven't had time. So Peggy, is there a reason that people wouldn't get the $600, given the online calculators say you may get the $600?
Yep, so the may words in there, the may, should, those kinds of things. We can never say 100% what unemployment is going to do. We've done the best that we can over the course of the last short period of time to find out all the information that we can. The $600 CARES Act money, if you are eligible for $1 from your state unemployment, then you're eligible for the entire $600 each week that you certify. So that that shouldn't be an issue as long as you're eligible. There may also be another avenue if you are not eligible for unemployment, for you still to apply to receive the $600 as well. There's three options on unemployment, and the first one on the left is the one for North Dakota that you hit is the one for customary unemployment. And the one on the far right, which is kind of a UND green, this is an area where people can go who traditionally are not eligible for unemployment to see if they can still get some sense of or some level of North Dakota unemployment and additionally the $600.
I think this is a short one, Peggy. Can staff members reduced to 0% still be involved with professional associations or other activities in which they are representing UND?
Yeah, I would say if they're representing UND, the answer is probably no, particularly if this is part of their position description. I would say the difference here would be if you are a member of Staff Senate or University Senate, those kinds of things on the board, an actual representative, you can still be involved in those efforts because that is a voluntary position, if you will. It's not required for your job. It's not like your job. You're not doing any work that would be considered part of your actual job that we've hired you for. And and again, specifically for Staff Senate, those are volunteer positions.
Thanks. And let me end with a question to Debbie. Have you considered adding more online degrees? Since graduate program enrollment is on the rise, wouldn't this make sense to offset some financial concerns?
Absolutely. We are interested in adding more online degrees. The deans have been working with their chairs to identify where there might be demand and capacity. So if faculty have ideas, we'd love to hear them, but that's absolutely an avenue that we want to grow, and that I think will distinguish us from our competitors. We already have a very solid online base of courses and programs that we offer that are known to be high quality, and we'd like to offer more. I think that's going to be a strong feature for us. So yes, we'd love to hear your ideas.
And that does it for us today. Thank you for joining us. I'd like to thank the whole leadership team for being here and the over 1,000 individuals who participated. We really enjoy the opportunity to communicate with you in this way, and we'll continue to provide these ways of communication as we navigate a very fluid situation. This Zoom Town Hall was recorded and will be posted along with questions and answers to our on our coronavirus blog later today. If you have more questions, and I know you do because we didn't get to all of them, you can write to us at und.info request, that's I N F O R E Q U E S T at u n d dot e n d e d u. Stay in, stay well. Thank you.